Okay. I'd like to call the King George County Public Schools Public Employee -- oh, sorry. I'm reading right off of this, silly me. To call the King George County School Board Special Meeting and Work Session for November 16th, 2020 to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in the moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we will have the King George County Public Schools Public Employee Comment. We have Casey Landrum. I'm sorry, mispronounced your name. Oh, thank you. Yes, you have a three-minute time interval. You'll see the little buttons on there. See green, and then it'll turn to yellow, gives you 15 seconds, 30 seconds, and then it'll go red. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Casey Landrum, and I'm a senior at King George High School. The first thing people will tell you about me is that I'm ambitious. I've got a long list of career goals that have been my primary focus for most of my life. I've always planned on being an Air Force pilot and then a NASA astronaut. I want to go to space and travel the world as well as a couple of other things. They're pretty lofty goals, I know, but I've worked towards them with every ounce of determination that I have. I made a solid plan many years ago, and I've managed to stick with it. As my senior year approached, the biggest and most important parts of my plan were coming into view. Things like college applications, school clubs, and sports, among other things I'm sure you can imagine, were all a part of this plan. I had even decided to start my own book club at the high school. There was so much I was going to do with my senior year, so much in preparation for achieving my dreams. Unfortunately, virtual schooling has made it all but impossible to do anything I'd originally planned to do, and now I fear my future is in jeopardy. However, this isn't about me. This is about all of King George's students whose lives have been turned upside down. This is about the futures of my fellow classmates, people who have also worked vigorously to accomplish their goals. This is about all of us watching our future slip away because we're missing out on key opportunities that we only have access to in regular school environment. This is about the work that we've put in and the fact that it feels worthless now. To watch everyone I go to school with take on the challenge of virtual learning was inspiring at first. Many rose to the challenge and have overcome the obstacles they faced. However, equally as many have suffered greatly trying to keep up and are barely managing to do so. Yes, virtual works for some, but it does not work for everyone. As members of the King George County School Board and representatives of the people, it is your duty to ensure all of the students in this county get the education they deserve, not just some. To argue that the majority of kids are handling virtual just fine is saying that we should continue to allow kids to suffer simply because they are the minority. That idea is asinine, and I will not stand for it. Quite simply, I'm done with this. I'm done suffering, and I'm done watching my classmates suffer. We deserve the right to choose our education, and we're done letting you choose for us. I've attended and watched the past school board meetings, and I've heard the outcry of parents and students alike. I think it's pretty clear at this point. King George is done with your indecision, done with your empty promises, and if you don't make up your mind soon, King George will be done with you. I've emailed every single one of you, and I've only received responses from Ms. Pansiera, Ms. Tolliver, and Ms. Gonzalez, so thank you for responding. I will continue emailing all of you until the situation is resolved. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Richard, and I'm a resident of King George County. First, I would like to thank the Board for making the decision to pursue the contract with Honeywell for the needlepoint bipolar ionization units for all of the buildings. From what it sounds like, these additions will be greatly improving the air quality in all of our buildings for a long time to come and not just during this current pandemic. During the last several months, I've been following the number of cases of COVID-19 on the VDH COVID-19 dashboard and on the school metrics dashboard. For those of you who aren't looking at these numbers daily, I would encourage you to monitor them and make healthy choices for yourselves and your families. And to the Board, I thank you for voting to keep us in this virtual mode because many districts across the state are moving back to virtual-only instruction due to our rising numbers. In the last few weeks, I have seen much discussion online that there are not any cases of COVID-19 in our schools, and I would like to encourage the Board to create a COVID-19 dashboard similar to those found on neighboring school systems' websites like Spotsylvania and Stafford. By offering such a dashboard, it will show the school system as being transparent, not only with staff but with the community. As we begin to look at solutions for bringing populations of students back into the buildings, it will be important to continue to monitor the number of positive cases in our schools. This information may be helpful when families are planning what type of instruction will best benefit their families. Additionally, a dashboard will be helpful in determining if there's an outbreak in a building and how best to support those students and staff while keeping everyone safe. Thank you.
Just confirm, Mr. Vance, if that's all the public comment. Okay, thank you. All right, so now we'd like to move on to the discussion item, reopening task force update. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, and chair members of the Board. We have two of our subcommittees, actually three, of our subcommittees represented here this evening, and I thought I'd bring -- or I'd have them bring updates to you regarding some concepts that they've been working on, in the case of the high school and the middle school. And then we also have our athletics subcommittee here. School divisions everywhere in Virginia are now trying to consider changes made to the governor's executive order and the work that the VDH has done with VHSL in terms of a possible winter athletic season. So earlier, I've emailed to you a rather lengthy document from the VHSL. Mr. Fisher and Ms. Fisher are here this evening to kind of help condense some of that and to present to you some specifics about athletics in general, not looking necessarily for you to make a decision, obviously, tonight, but thought we should at least entertain the discussion now since early December is when that season will be coming about. So with that, I know they're here, and I'll bring them up. After them, we have Dr. Boyd and Ms. Collins are here from the high school and middle school respectively. They want to talk to you about an idea about engaging more students under the authority we have already under Phase 3, but I thought it'd be a good information item for you all to have for this evening. So with that said, I'd like to reintroduce Mr. Fisher and Ms. Fisher. For the public, Mr. Fisher is our high school athletic director. Ms. Fisher is here, of course, to help with our -- the health plans and the information regarding health and athletics to bring it together. So thank you all both for being here. Appreciate the information in advance.
I'm actually gonna start tonight just with some background information on the health side of our in-person programs that we have going on right now. And there, you should have a handout that I passed out prior to the meeting. And we'll just go ahead and get started. Obviously, I was here a couple of weeks ago to talk to you in general about the Health Mitigation Plan that we currently have in place for King George County schools. Tonight, I'll talk a little bit about that in general, but more specifically about our in-person programs and athletics, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Fisher if he can talk more specifically about athletics. So obviously, we've been working on these plans since March, when school shut down, first to finish the 1920 school year, then to try to get back for summer school, and finally now where we are trying to return for the 2021 school year. We've been amending it as we go along with updates from CDC and VDH guidelines, and included in those plans, it does speak to athletic programs and other in-person programs. As you may be aware, Phase 2, which was announced in June, permitted the return to in-person programs for special education populations, ELL, as well as pre-K through 3. And then on July 1, in-person programs were expanded to include all students and programs, pre-K through 12. And we have submitted a plan each time in accordance with the guidelines provided through VE's RRR document. And then that chart there shows how many -- what programs we have in place currently since July 1, when we were permitted to return to in-person, and some estimated numbers. Some of those numbers are very exact because we have reports we can pull very quickly to get those exact numbers, and then you'll see some of them are estimated because there might be students that, for example, participate in more than one sport, so their name might be included twice, and we did not flesh that out for this chart. I do want to point out, all of these programs are King George County school-specific, except for the very last one, King George County Athletics, and I included that because tonight we're talking about athletic programs, which includes county programs such as Parks and Recreation that utilize school facilities. So that 250 number is the approximate number of participants in those kinds of activities that have used school facilities since July 1. Go to the next slide, please. Next slide. Thank you. So in order for any of these programs to take place, they have to adhere, of course, to the guidance that we have under Phase 3, as well as submit their own program-specific guidance, which is reviewed by the Health Mitigation Plan Team. They have to provide training, professional development, information to families, develop response protocols, et cetera, prior to any of those beginning. And so to this point, all of those programs have, in fact, done that and are in compliance with that, and will continue to do so as more programs are presented. Go to the next slide. So in regards specifically to athletics and our role, our role as a health mitigation team, again, just as all school divisions were began working in March, so did the VHSL, and they provided, you know, first they canceled sports for the 1920 school year and then immediately began working on how to return students back, student athletes back to the athletics moving forward. In June, in alignment with the VE's document, they published, VHL, VHSL, published their own guidance specific to sports and permitted out-of-season practices to begin, which I'm sure you guys, when you pulled up tonight, you noticed there were football players on the field, and they have been participating in out-of-season conditioning and practices since July 1. At the bottom, the chart there compares Phase 2 and Phase 3 recommendations from VHSL. That's just a very brief summary of some of the main points that they had in their original document, guidance document, that we, of course, followed and adhered to. Next slide. These are the programs that presented health mitigation plans and chose to return to in-person athletics under those guidelines from the VHSL. For the high school programs, you'll see on the left-hand side of the chart, those are the programs that are currently participating in out-of-season conditioning, and on the right-hand side, those are the county programs. Again, those are only the ones that are specifically utilizing King George County schools' facilities, as well as the number of participants in each. Some of the county programs have finished. I believe Little League is done, soccer may also be finished, but I wanted to include those just for your information. You'll see that we did kind of phase in sports, and that was at athletics, you know, discretion. After speaking with the coaches, Mr. Fisher and the coaches agreed that they would phase it in, try a couple of sports, make sure they had the plans in place, and continue as such. So that's what we currently have in place right now under the current Phase 3 guidelines. Okay, next slide. Now, moving forward after July 1, when it was announced that athletics could return to out-of-season conditioning, they, VHSL, began working on the model to return competitions and how to adjust the seasons. Just briefly, they had three models that they presented. Model 1 was going to leave the seasons as they, as you currently know them, fall, winter, spring, but they were going to only allow for low and moderate-risk sports. I did include, the very last page of that document has the chart of low, moderate, and risk, just for your reference. Model 2 was going to do some rearranging of the seasons, but again, only allow for low, moderate, or moderate-risk sports. And then Model 3, which is what they ultimately voted on, delayed the start to December, which is why we're here today talking to you. It realigned some of the seasons, and it allows all sports to compete. That's important to know for a couple of reasons. Their decision to choose Model 3, one is because it would allow more time to get some health mitigation in place for competitions, as well as ensure as much opportunity and equity as they could across the different sports, rather than choosing which sports they would promote and which ones they would not. Continued working on their plans, and then on October 30th, two weeks ago, they announced, along with Governor Northam's amendment to Executive Order 67, that athletics could begin their competitions starting in December. So that chart at the bottom there compares the Phase 3 guidance that we're in right now versus come December 7, when competitions may begin, what that guidance would look like. They didn't give it a name, so I just called it "expanded," but it's all of that return-to-participation guidance that Dr. Benson shared with you last week, the very long document. The biggest differences are updating the CDC changes with the physical distancing, which we spoke about a couple of weeks ago, as well as, again, allowing actual competitions to take place across schools. So what we've, at this point, Mr. Fisher and I have met and gone over all of the documents that you guys have in front of you. We've ordered all of the, continue to order all of the supplies that would be needed in order to continue with sports as we currently have them, as well as moving forward into December, and all of the plans that are currently in place would continue for out-of-season practices, and then, of course, adhere to the guidance that was developed or presented, I'm sorry, on October 30th. And Mr. Fisher is going to speak specifically about those programs now. If you have questions specific to health, I'm happy to answer those.
Yes, I had just one quick question, Ms. Fisher. Thank you for the information. I was wondering, back in the beginning for the in-person programs, if the, so it says that there are about 50 participants right now in in-person instruction. I was just wondering if you could give a little insight as to what those, if those students were, how they were selected, or what their...
Dr. Benson, maybe I could speak a little bit better on how they were selected. Those would be, those would include special education students that virtual instruction for their IEP is not enough for their needs. We have students that are attending day placement programs, connectivity issues, so like internet hubs and those sorts of things.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Tolliver? Ms. Hawk?
None right now, thank you.
Mr. Collins? Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us tonight. We appreciate that. Mr. Vance, could you move to the next slide? The next slide. I'm glad you got the document I sent. I know it's very, very, very lengthy, and it's very detailed. By design, I'm not going to go through all of that tonight. I think for me to do that and do that by PowerPoint would be an incredibly long night, but what I do really want to cover is what the winter, the upcoming winter season would look like. As it was alluded to earlier, when they redesign their seasons, they have condensed everything to 60%, and then in order of seasons, they're doing the winter season first. And when I say "they," the VHSL. Now, the VHSL, for those who don't know, that's our governing body. That's who makes all of our rules, determinations. They have an executive committee that, and many subcommittees that make all these decisions for us. So they want to start with that winter season first, then they're going to squeeze, quote-unquote, "that fall season" in between the traditional winter and the traditional spring season. Since they've condensed everything to 60%, everything works out very nice and works out very clean getting to the end of the school year. And so that's kind of the thought process there. In that document, you can see that a lot of people and a lot of groups put the time into that. You know, this is not just a VHSL has met in a closed room behind closed doors and made decisions here. They've asked for a lot of help. They've reached out to a lot of different groups and a lot of different people, and have really been able to put something comprehensive together. So if you do decide that you want to dig into that and get through the weeds, as they like to say, you'll see a lot of good information in there and hopefully things that will put you at ease that will be required to do to make it safe for our kids. Next slide. Talking about masks and face coverings, the way this is going to work in the winter season, they've pretty much let us know and are using exercise and workouts as a guide of where masks can be and where masks cannot be. If you watch sports at all right now on TV, you're seeing a lot of the sideline people wearing masks, and you hear about maybe the NFL, people getting fined, and they really want to keep the masks on the people that aren't participating. That's going to hold true with our high school kids. Sideline, if you're on the sidelines, if you're waiting on the bench, coaches, trainers, support staff, staff, any staff that's going to work the games, all those people will be required to be in masks. Spectators will be required to be in masks. People that are participating in the event itself won't necessarily be required. It would be very difficult, and I'm going to use basketball as the example since that's our first upcoming sport, be difficult for basketball players to be running up and down the court playing basketball with the masks on. There's many different masks you can use. There was actually some discussion about having masks even around the necks of the kids so that as soon as they got off the court, they could put them back on. What's going to be important is that the coaches' kids understand the rules, and then we stay on them and make sure that they're doing the things that they need to be doing. And I think when you talk to a lot of the high school kids that play sports right now, they'd be happy to follow any rules to be able to play the sport, so I don't think that's going to be a big deal at all. The part, the bullet at the end where it talks about non-competing participants, etc., that would be situations where coaches are talking to the officials' table and have a questionnaire, or coaches are talking to officials. Those will all be mask situations. It's been very interesting to listen to when the VHSL has come up with these things and reached out to us. One of the things that they're very concerned about is how we care for our officials, and they've made it abundantly clear that once those officials enter our schools, that we are taking care of them from top to bottom. Their locker room is clean, the equipment that they're going to use is clean, that the way we communicate with them is going to be beyond reproach. So that's important to them as well. Where the spectators sit, you know, they have really mapped it out, and you can see that in that document, to really take care of the people that will be entering our building. Next slide. Locker rooms and transportation, these, again, have been laid out for us pretty clear. Locker rooms are fairly easy to clean. It's a lot of hard surfaces. We will be cleaning locker rooms before use, and we will be cleaning locker rooms after use. The kids will be responsible for taking their cloth equipment home. That's practice jerseys, towels, things like that. One of the things that we're asking, and it's on another slide, but I'll go ahead and mention it now, we're asking our coaches to do is to take care of all game uniforms. All game uniforms will stay onsite, on campus, even at our away game. As soon as we get back, they'll manage all the cleaning of that, and we'll do those specifically by the guidelines given to us by the VHSL. Transportation will be just a simple follow of the rules. The rules will be given to us about what to do. They've given us some loading procedures. Again, I'm taking the VHSL. I'm not really talking to Ms. Picorillo about it too much, but the loading procedures they have given us make sense. Load back to front, and then when you exit, you exit front to back. You have assigned seats for both, for the trip to the game and the trip back home from the game. Simple things like that will be very easy for my coaches to manage and for the kids to understand and follow. Next slide. With the cleaning and disinfecting of athletic equipment, it looks very different during a practice than it would during a game. Again, we'll reference basketball. When you think about a basketball practice, there are balls being used, lots of balls being used, even with our student athletes right now that are coming in to use, to play basketball, work out with the team, get their conditioning in. Those basketballs are clean periodically throughout that hour-and-a-half workout, and that would be, that would not change going into what practice would look like come December 7. We have purchased some spray disinfectant that is reactive, that can react to the virus and kill the virus in less than one minute. That's going to be very beneficial to us and to keep things moving. We have lots of equipment. We've ordered more equipment so we can recycle and rotate equipment in and rotate equipment out. While stuff's being cleaned, we can use other. Things like that are really going to be what keeps the practices mobile, what keeps them active, and what keeps them learning and getting ready for their next game. Game guidelines will be a little bit different, and we'll go through that a little bit here in just a second, but we, while we would not necessarily be able to clean things continually throughout the game, we have been mandated by the VHSL to make time for that. There will be, timeouts will be extra long in some cases. In-between periods and quarters will be extra long so that we can take care of cleaning, we can take care of the social distancing, communication, those sorts of pieces. Next slide. Okay, we'll go in sport by sport, only for the winter. Again, I won't bore you or get too far into what the fall and the spring would look like. The basketball modifications that we will be making will be, starting with the team benches. The team benches will be set up differently than what you would normally look as you go into a game in a traditional setting, where there's just one row of chairs. If you think about the NBA bubble, if you watched any of the NBA games where they separated their chairs, were able to make much space for their players to sit. In those situations, and I don't know if you're aware of this, they were also assigned seats. We will be doing the same thing. This will be Student A's seat for that game, period, end of story. They're the only one that can sit there. Their towel will be there. They will have a marker on their seat so they know where they're supposed to go when they come out of the game, and their water bottle will be there, and that's it. And that's the only person that will be in that area. Officials will get the game balls prior to the game, and what I will do is I will take two, maybe three, game balls into their locker room, and we will disinfect them together. So when I hand them over to the officials, they will know that they are carrying game balls to the game that are ready to go and are disinfected. Then, we're required at each timeout to extend that timeout just a little bit and then take time to disinfect the balls. And this is where we will rotate some balls, just in case the 30-second timeout doesn't really give us the time for that disinfectant to work, we'll have another ball clean, ready to go, that we can say, okay, Mr. Referee, here you go, use this one. And that'll be something we'll just stay on top of. The gym will be set up for maximum opportunity of fan and official safety. Right now, the governor has set us at 25. We were at 2:50 as of Friday, and then Friday afternoon, we're now at 25. We are very lucky. We have a huge gym. We're one of the biggest gyms in the area. We have plenty of seating for 25 fans to come in and be socially distant and be safe. That's not going to be a problem. Setting up our officials' table, we've purchased Plexiglas that people will sit in, and everybody will be partitioned. Okay? And so all they have to do is dodge the random ball that comes at them every once in a while, but other than that, they won't be in a danger of infecting each other as long as these partitions are set in between them. We also have to watch what our support staff looks like. Sometimes, we were able to do lots of extra things with announcers and have extra people at the table, and then you have the freelance star come and sit at the table. Obviously, we'll have to change a lot of that. It'll be just as-needed personnel sitting at that table to keep everything safe. The last thing, if you're a basketball fan, this will kind of drive you crazy because it kind of does me, but they're actually changing the game to help, and they're taking away the jump ball. There is no jump ball at the beginning of a game anymore. That now goes to the visiting team, and we start play. So it's a little unceremonious, but we're okay with that. The kids are okay with that, and the coaches, I know, will come up with some plans to be able to attack that instead of doing the normal jump ball. Next slide. Our sideline cheer modifications. I've talked to the coach, then the coach is on board, and the coach completely understands that we will not participate as a sideline cheer team at basketball games. One of the things that she came up with that I thought was a phenomenal idea is one thing we're going to institute, and I've actually talked to other ADs in the area about this because I think it's such a great idea. They're going to create a virtual pep squad. Because they will still be able to practice and not attend games, they're going to prepare the kids as they normally would for a game, but the neat thing that they're going to do is to get the kids excited about being a part of the game and use the social media push. They're going to create little pep moments and video... moments and video those and we'll push those out. Hey, there's a game Friday night. The girls that are cheering may say something about the game, you know, it's exciting, come watch, cheer on your classmates and then do a cheer. So we're going to treat this virtually and I think it's going to be kind of neat and allow the kids at least to have something to participate in. Next slide. Our swim team modifications have really already been put in place. Swim, if you've had students that swim, you know that swim is a year-round sport and they have not stopped. They're one of the the programs that have kept going and going and going all through the, all through the COVID. And this has already been figured out. They have put meets together and are now participating in meets and we will follow a lot of those guidelines. We're very lucky to have the YMCA as as our sponsor and to be able for us to go every day. We're one of the very few schools that can practice every day and why it lets us do that. We're able to host these meets. The thing that we are not super excited about, but we completely understand and we will 100% accommodate is fans will not be able to attend a swim meet. Fans are probably 90, 95% parents. I've talked to my swim coach about this. I said, what's that impact going to look like? How is this going to work with the parents? Are they going to be upset? And he said, Mr. Fisher, quite frankly, we've been doing this all summer and the parents that are swimming parents and that are in the travel area, they understand and they've made it work. And again, to to be able to participate for some of our kids that want to reach college and have those, that last senior year, I think that's something that they will 100% fall in line with. There's some discussion within your document about how to manage a meet. Again, I'm not going to get into that with you guys. I can, I can go through it if you want, but some of the things that they're talking about with who can talk to who and how you can communicate with the coach and how the official can talk to the referee, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So all of that has been taken into account. I just did not include that in the presentation, but we'd be happy to discuss more if you would like. Next slide. Our, it's called indoor track. It would be nice to have one of those, but we don't and there's only a couple in the state, so it's also known as winter track. This one's pretty simple. You're outside, you still have to adhere to all the guidelines and the kids that aren't actually participating will be in masks, coach will be in masks, even outside. It's about the implements with track, shot put, discus, pole vault, batons for relay. The kids will be, if you have your own, you're going to be able to use your own and and you would use it and you would be the only one that would use it. The school provides many of those things because kids won't go out and buy a shot put because when are you going to use a shot put after you graduate or if you do? And so in those situations, those would be cleaned and disinfected after use if they needed to be shared. The one thing the VHSL did with indoor winter track is they took away all sanctioning for events larger than duels. Now, dual track meet is basically team versus team, school versus school. It's very popular in the track world to go on a Saturday to a school and they would have 50, 60 schools there all trying to run at the same time. The VHSL said there's no way they can control or put any, basically they said you as a school cannot mitigate any problems in that situation, so we're going to keep you from making a stupid decision and we're just not going to allow you to do it. And that's fine. That makes things very easy and very clean for us, for track, to be able to just compete school versus school. Next slide. Our wrestling modifications are a little more extensive. These will be in more detail, especially in your handout than than most of the other sports and for obvious reasons. You know, this is a very close contact sport and and it takes great skill and great development to, for these kids to do what they do. But being in that situation they are, that's something that they really wanted to make sure that they had everything taken care of. As far as the setup of games or, excuse me, for wrestling fans that are listening, I apologize. As far as setting up for matches, it will be very much the same as basketball. Very much social distance, everything set up with with all of that in mind, a lot of space in between the wrestlers, with chairs that are marked for them, with their water bottle and with their towel. Home matches again will only be duels. Again, that is team versus team. And what we will do is we will be setting up wrestling matches actually with two mats. The VHSL is requiring us to clean the mat after each match. A match is usually 14, a full match is 14 different kids wrestling each other. So in between each one of those, they want us to completely clean the whole mat. Now, that's great and it's it's a phenomenal idea, but it takes a while for that stuff to dry. And if you were to have just the one mat and you put the, you put the cleaner on and you clean it and you could wait an extensive amount of time before you could wrestle again. The most makes sense idea is to set up two mats, they're using one, we're cleaning the other. A match takes approximately 10 minutes, approximately 10 minutes. That should give plenty of drying time and then you would be able just to rotate the mats from one to the other. The VHSL did also in in order, or in coordination with not being so close contact the whole time with these wrestlers, they've changed the match times. A typical wrestling match is three periods of two minutes. Now what they're saying is they're saying the first period, you will do a one-minute period and then the second and third periods, you will do two-minute periods. Again, that's just to remove some of that face-to-face time with kids. Practice time will be set up very interesting and we'll go on to, if you can go on to the next slide, we'll talk a little more about what practice might look like. They're requiring wrestlers to be paired, paired in groups of four, will be in groups of four only. That's their training pod. Within that group of four, they will pair off and then that's how they will practice and that's how they will wrestle. They can do that for two weeks. They are in that pod and they are paired inside of that pod for a two-week period of time before a coach can change the pods and change who they would wrestle. They want, they want, of course, mandatory breaks every 10 minutes and what this is going to do is this is going to keep those kids separate after 10 minutes of work, allow them to wash their hands, allow to clean the mats that they're, if they're working in just a small centralized area and be able to move safely on to the remaining of practice. Now, it's going to make practices longer and quite frankly, we're probably going to have to do some things about being unique, about how we do our practice times because of the, because of the way it's set up with, we can only use 144 square foot area and some of the details that are in that, in that document. Spreading things out a little bit, moving mats to different areas potentially, a lot of it will be a coordination between the wrestling coach and myself about what makes the most sense, what's the safest and how can we maximize the time? So we're not there all night long with just a practice. The VHSL has also told us that live wrestling should be limited in practice, that it's more going to be shadowing, it's more going to be practice moves, it's more going to be about conditioning than it is about live wrestling that goes for the whole time. Next slide. Talking about what fans would look like and talking about how people can watch games, one of the things that we have really kind of dug into is how can we help out our fans? As things are right now with the number that's given to us, you know, it doesn't take, doesn't take a lot to really realize there can't be a whole lot of people in there and if you were a, a parent at one point of a student athlete, that's the one thing that you look forward to in the evening is being able to go watch them play their game. In many cases, this might be taken away. So we've, working with the NFHS Network, NFHS is the National Federation of High Schools and they cover high school sports all across the United States. They're the big governing body that the VHSL works under. And we're working about, we're working with them about a camera system. It'll be a two-camera system, they'll put one in the gym and they will put one at the stadium. And with these camera systems, parents can purchase a monthly subscription to watch games. And the neat thing about this is many teams in our district are using this same system. The benefit of having more teams in the district use this system than not is once you pay for a subscription, you can watch your kid play anywhere they play as long as that school has this camera system set up. And so that's really going to be a great way. You don't have the cheering, you don't have the yelling, but it'll be done at home at a TV screen in many cases more than it would be yelling at the referee in our gym and trying to make your point there. We will also take the, for the small amount of seats that we can sell, we're also going to use a ticket model called Ticket Spigot and that's going to be our online ticket purchasing option. Everything will be taken care of online. I can set that up any way I want. If I want all of the 25 tickets given to me to be Only King George fans, I can do that because we would get a unique code. If I wanted it to be just seniors, for example, and have the seniors be able to invite their parents, I could do that because I could give them a unique code. We would still have a ticket taker at the games, but that would be just a person that would be checking the phones and making sure that the ticket was purchased and that the right people are in and that we're not trying to have other people and exceed that 25 limit because we certainly don't want to be in that business of of trying to stretch the rules. Tomorrow, we as a district, the battlefield district, and that's our local schools that we play, we are meeting tomorrow to come up with all of the other what-ifs. What do we want to do as a district? We are only playing district games. We only have space in our schedule for district games. So what we want to be able to do is when I play a game at Eastern View, which is in Culpeper, the rules will be the same either way. If I play, or if Caroline played in Spotsy, we would all be under the same idea of what's going to be allowed and what's not. That could be anything and we're really kind of wide open in that meeting to cover lots of different things. I'm happy, we're a good working group. We get along very well and we really want what's best for the kids. We all want to play. So it's going to be some good stuff that comes out of that meeting that gives us some more mitigation strategies. Next slide. This just kind of gives you an idea, this is page 19, this gives you an idea of the schools that are in our district and what they are doing right now. You can see that three of the schools in our district are in Spotsy, so they will all be under the same rules. Caroline and James Monroe, which is in Fred City, they're the most like us. Right now, they're still in the 100% remote virtual world and you can see what they've decided and how they're going to move forward. Eastern View, which is in Culpeper County, has kind of been really on the outside, not only as a footprint of the district, but they've started the hybrid and they're, they're going pretty full bore there. I actually talked to their AD again today just to get some information and, you know, they're 100% ready to go full bore and they're, they've got their own thing going on out there at Eastern View. Next slide. And this is what Ms. Fisher talked about earlier. This was the appendix of this presentation and it kind of gives you what the lower risk sports are, gives you an idea of what the moderate and then the higher risk sports. These are important only by definition. Sometimes we will be told high-risk sports will only be allowed to do these things and this is what I would refer to in that situation if we always given any kind of direction otherwise. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Fisher. That's a lot of great, really great information. I just have one question. On slide 19, the additional considerations, what's the, they all say screening and then the first three say waiver. What is, what is that distinction? No?
Mr. Vance, can you go backwards to slide 19, please? Ask me that question again, Ms. Gonzalez.
Yeah, so the, the first three, the ones at the top, Eastern View, James Monroe and Caroline, like in the far column, they say screening and waiver and the other ones, Spotsy didn't say waiver. I was just wondering what the difference is. What's the waiver?
What we know about Eastern View is they are not screening their student athletes daily, meaning they're not doing the temperature check or the questions. They actually are doing an acknowledgement form with their student athletes. And what that has done with them is basically it's their ticket to play. If they don't sign that acknowledgement form and their parents, they're not even allowed to participate. It has taken away that step in their world and this is their, their way of feeling comfortable that, that any kid that's playing, student athlete is playing is they're on their own accord and they understand the dangers.
Okay, so if we were to, if we were to add King George to that, we're screening our students or we have waiver?
If we were adding King George, we would be doing the two screenings. We're doing the temperature checks right now and they're doing the questions.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
I don't have any questions, but I did want to say thank you, Mr. Fisher. Ms. Fisher, this is really great information and very, very well put together. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Hawk?
I really want to echo Ms. Tolliver's statement that this, this is an excellent presentation from both of you and I really, really appreciate because it did answer a lot of my questions. I'm an old swim parent, so I knew, I knew that, but, but I didn't, I couldn't imagine how you were going to do the wrestling piece, for example. And I am, I am familiar with wrestling, but I'm very impressed. This is, this is exactly what we needed to hear. Thank you, thank you, Bud.
Well, I, I will put a lot of it on the VHSL, too. They spent a lot of time and talked to a lot of people and they, and they really wanted to make sure that as many school divisions as could felt safe enough to participate.
And I have been following the VHSL and they always have been, in my experience anyway, really well organized. It's, it's a machine, it's a huge machine, but it seems to flow together really, really well over the years. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
I have any questions?
Thank you very much. It was a nice presentation.
Thank you.
Next, as I mentioned earlier, Dr. Boyd and Ms. Collins are here, our high school principal and middle school principal, respectively, to bring you updates from their subcommittees.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for all your time and consideration in many of these challenging issues and certainly thank you for listening to us tonight on an update. So as you know, Dr. Benson formed a committee, Superintendent Advisory Committee on the Return to Learn and there's many subcommittees that have been meeting regularly. I'm a member of the High School Scheduling Subcommittee. Ms. Collins is a member of the Middle School Scheduling Subcommittee and we've met together many, many times since the inception of the Superintendent's Advisory Committee. We'd like to come to you this evening and talk to you about one of the proposals that has come out of our subcommittee. We're really working on two. The first one I'm going to talk to you about tonight and then the second is one that we hope to talk to you about in the future, which would involve returning to school in January if it's deemed appropriate at that time. But let's talk a little bit about this evening. This evening, we're going to talk to you about timely, targeted and structured intervention. So you'll see with some data that we're going to present here shortly that intervention is needed. I know many of you guys have talked about performance of middle school and high school students and we're going to talk to you about some of that data here this evening. But this proposal will be a continuation of virtual education as it's being presented right now in a safe and supervised environment, which would be conducive to learning, which is not always the case in some of the environments right now our students are learning in. So we would like to be able to provide that opportunity as we move forward because you'll certainly see that the data would require it.
Like Dr. Boyd said, we are going to present some data that will show who we think needs to be invited to come in prior to the return to learn for all students in January. So I think we're ready for the next slide. So our subcommittees discussed who we're going to bring in and looking at it, we've categorized four different groups. And you can see that, so I don't really want to read it to you, but for those that are listening, I will. Students with internet connectivity and/or attendance issues, students with special names, and that's our English learners, IEP students, 504 students. Our third group is students who are at risk of failing multiple classes. At the high school, the priority would be starting with seniors and at the middle school, the priority would be starting with students who are failing at least three or more of their classes. And then the fourth group are students that need hands-on CTE work, those students in the career and technical education courses who need to complete state competencies. An example is the nurse aide students.
Okay, next slide, John. Okay, that's the who, we'll talk to you now about the what. Under the Virginia Department of Education's Phase Guidance for Schools, we would ask that we could have students participate in virtual education at a workstation inside of the building. This would not be school, this would not be going through their classes, working their way around the building, but we do want to provide and we've seen success already in providing a safe, secure, structured environment where our students would have a dedicated internet connection in a socially distant environment so that we could, as one of my committee members says, she says mom 'em, but we, we would parent them and see what we could do to help them succeed in, in a more nurturing environment than maybe they're experiencing right now. The instructional plan will be supported by the current health mitigation plan, which Ms. Fisher has presented to the board. And there will be minimal changing of locations throughout the instructional day and coordinated movement through the and coordinated movement through the corridors to maintain appropriate social distancing. Uh, and then the wearing of masks will certainly be required as well. Intensive cleaning protocols in the areas of the building that we would use would certainly be adhered to. Next slide, please.
So we're asking to begin this the Monday after we return from Thanksgiving and run the program through the last day before winter break, so November 30th through December 18th and then January 4th through the 14th. That will be five weeks for students to have an extra opportunity to have the structured environment in the building. As you can see in your chart, the middle school and the high school bell schedules are similar. The high school's offers four classes per day or the middle school offers three per day on an alternating.
Uh, I do want to mention too, this is five weeks and this is a very important five weeks of instruction. This is just before our final set of interims go out for the first semester, the conclusion of the first semester. Uh, and you'll see here shortly that we've got, uh, a number of students that we think would, uh, benefit from this intervention. We have certain seniors who are graduating that need courses, that have to have these courses to graduate and we certainly would be targeting those students as well. Uh, John, could you go to the next slide, please? Uh, where this would occur, administration would set up socially distanced workstations at King George High School and King George Middle School. Uh, we would likely use common areas like our library and our gymnasium to set up, uh, socially distant workstations, similar to what we did for the PSAT here at the high school. Uh, these, obviously these workstations, if they're in the school, would provide a reliable internet connection and the vi- the environment would be conducive to learning and to create an opportunity for teachers and special education case managers, uh, to stop by on their planning periods and work with them on occasion when they had an extra, uh, minute to do so. Um, and as I said earlier, social distancing protocol would be strictly adhered to, uh, for all students and staff during, during the instructional day.
And we're ready for the next slide, please? So, this is, gives us the why and this is just a starting point for students, um, we wanted to provide you with some more detailed data. I know we've, we've talked a little bit about this and or I think maybe we sent this by email to the board. Um, we did pull out some comparison data from last school year at this time versus this year at this time and you can see that and, you know, ask us any more detailed questions. I think Dr. Boyd probably has some things. I know my data's pretty telling.
Yeah, I think this is, this is certainly the impetus of, of our request. Uh, as you can see and as you saw, uh, or heard from one of our seniors tonight, virtual education is working for many, it's not working for all. Uh, and, and there's certain things absent from their education right now that we feel we could provide, uh, in this safe environment. Uh, and we're hoping honestly, we have to hope that, uh, we can make these numbers smaller. Uh, as you see in that first column, that M1 was the end of the first marking period last year and then the M1 2020 is the end of the first marking period this year and you can see that there's quite a difference there. Uh, we've got a number of seniors in that group that need these courses to graduate. We've got a number of, uh, students that, um, if they were to continue to fall behind and these become final grades, uh, would certainly put them, uh, behind in their education. So I, I think the why speaks volumes and, uh, we certainly hope that, um, um, we can serve these students any way that, uh, you guys deem appropriate. Next slide, please. Okay, so the how, this is kind of envisioning the way that we would, um, put this program together. First off, a Google form would be used to allow teachers the ability to request students. Uh, so obviously the teachers with their feet on the ground are going to have a pretty good idea of what students need to be served for a multitude of different reasons and we could use a Google form, uh, so that the teachers could make those requests. Those are probably the students, some of the students that we would start with. As we said earlier, we would work from our, at the high school, we would work from our seniors down to make sure that, uh, we were meeting graduation requirements, uh, and, and helping students pass classes they needed to graduate. The administration, uh, at the high school would certainly backfill that data or that list of students, uh, with situations we knew, uh, would, would, would benefit from this program. Did you want to speak about how the middle school would choose?
The middle school's going to do a similar process. We certainly want to gather teacher input and allow teachers to have their voice heard on which students they feel like would, would benefit the most, but we're also going to use data such as the grades and attendance, um, to help us prioritize our students because, you know, you can see the need is great.
Many high school students, uh, drive themselves and, and I imagine there's a certain number of students too that would have their own, uh, transportation, but we have spoken with Dr. Benson and, uh, we would hope to be able to, uh, provide transportation depending on student need. Uh, we work through, through those details as we get further down the road. Uh, students, uh, as was mentioned earlier, would participate in the health screenings prior to entering the building. Uh, just as was mentioned earlier, the, the no-contact, uh, temperature probe, the questions coming into the building. Um, and then, as I said moments ago, movement in the building would be limited and managed, uh, to allow for appropriate cleaning protocols. Students and staff would adhere to appropriate social distancing throughout the building during the instructional day. Um, I spoke with, uh, Ms. Davis and nutrition services would be provided to these students that were in attendance. Uh, students should bring their materials that they need to connect, uh, the school-issued Chromebook, headphones, and if they needed, uh, these materials, we certainly could check those, uh, out to them as well. And then, uh, teachers would be made aware of the students that were in attendance so that they could have the ability to visit those students if they, uh, thought that would be beneficial.
That completes our slide presentation, but we are happy to answer any questions for you.
Are we on? There we go. Okay. Ms. Gonzalez, do you have any questions?
Certainly. Um, so thank you, Dr. Boyd, Ms. Collins. This is great. I definitely, I think it's a great plan. Um, obviously there's a need, so thank you for putting this together. I was just wondering, um, in the, the, the discussion about where, so that teachers, so if students are set up, the teachers can stop by, um, during their, their breaks, that sort of thing to attend to, to help students as necessary. Will there be other supervision, I assume, like provided to assist like during general class periods and whatnot, like other staff or how is that going to work?
Yes. So at the high school and I believe at the middle school, so you can speak to us, but at the high school, we would staff the entire instructional day, uh, with probably administrative staff or, um, some of our paraprofessionals, but that would be during the entire instructional day and then teachers would come down during their breaks to, to help instructional.
And that's a similar.
Yeah. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Ms. Tolliver?
I don't always have a billion questions.
Only one question. Um, I too, thank you. I think this is very well done. I know it's being done successfully in other divisions and I, I think it's a great way to reach out to those in need. Um, really just one question. So the numbers would be limited to the available, what, the ones you would start with would be limited to available space? Okay, and so what if, I guess if someone was invited and chose to not take advantage of it, you'd move on to the next person. Um, but what if you have, um, someone who starts attending and then falls off, would there be a time period of they not attending before you would move on to fill that space with another student?
Yeah, we would hopefully be in, in constant contact. In fact, to begin this process, we are going to be making a lot of phone calls, sending a lot of emails, seeing who we can get in and start with our highest need students. Uh, and then, of course, there is the concern that, that, um, some of those students will not attend with this, with this opportunity given to them. So we'll work our way down that list, staying on the phone with them, seeing if they plan to attend. Hopefully they do, hopefully we can encourage them to do so, but if not, we certainly want to work our way down the list to the next student that's in need.
Okay, thank you very much. This is very good information. Very well done.
Ms. Hawk?
Yes, again, I'll echo Ms. Tolliver that, that it is very well done and, and the statistics are frightening as we sort of assumed they would be, honestly, it's not a surprise. Uh, I, my only question was that, uh, do you have counselors and social workers who'll be available during these times also?
Yes, I do. I think we both, both our schools do. We have support staff that are physically in the building daily.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
No questions.
I just have one question. Have we worked on the bus scheduling, how that would work?
We've talked a lot about it. We've talked about, uh, with Dr. Benson about express stops and, and things of that nature. Uh, like I said, at the high school, I, I don't want to speak in, in terms that are too general, but I think we'll have many, many students that, um, will drive to school, many students that, uh, certainly in this environment, they may want to be dropped off at school. But as we get closer to that list of students and we work with transportation to figure out where those stops would be appropriate in that.
Great, any more questions? Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
So, thank you all. These were information items, just updates from a couple of our committees. Veterans Day last week, so, uh, was last week, Wednesday, so we did not have a full committee meeting, but we do have one planned for this week.
Okay. Okay, did we have any more questions for Dr. Benson? No?
I guess the only thing I'd, I'd ask, I, the, uh, the latter presentation is really just kind of information, you know, we're permitted to do that under phase three, the, the athletic questions maybe when you want to continue to think about, um, in concert with other school divisions and just let us, let us know if there's an endorsement, uh, to continue to plan, uh, or if there's, if there's opinion of the board in an opposite direction. I guess that's, time is of the essence there, given the early December.
So I guess we could put it on our, our agenda item under discussion next week?
Not put you on the spot tonight, but we can, we probably would want to bring it back.
Action or discussion?
Behind discussion.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're adjourned.
Thank you all very much. Well done. Thanks, John.[1566.63]